Like to call the order, Dolphin County Board of Commissioners Workshop Meeting for Wednesday, May 28th, 2025. We'll begin with a moment of silence as we reflect on past weekend of Memorial Day. I'd like to have an extended moment of silence and for us to take some time to remember those who have made the ultimate sacrifice, or even those who have sacrificed in service of our country.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we are in our workshop meeting, approval of minutes will take place in our next meeting. Is there any question of the approval of minutes for next week's meeting? Hearing none, we'll move on. Executive sessions held between meetings. Mr. Haggerty.
Good morning. On Thursday, May 22nd, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding the purchase or lease of real property. On Tuesday, May 27th, another executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding the purchase or lease of real property and collective bargaining.
Good deal. Moving into election board meeting? At this point? Okay. Mr. Spackman here for...okay.
Morning, Chris.
How are you?
Good.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For requesting that you sign off on first certification of the results of the May 20th, 2025 municipal primary, I'd like to summarize a few of the numbers of interest. First, for turnout for voting, it...there was 25% turnout of registered Democratic voters, and 22% of Republican voters for a grand total of 24% turnout. For provisional ballots, there was 136 ballots cast, of which 61 were counted in full, 13 were partially counted, and 62 were rejected due to issues such as individuals not being registered to vote, not being registered Republican or Democratic voter, or a first-time voter failing to show ID at the polling place, and additionally not showing ID at our office by May 27th. Some of the write-in nominations, I am still going through those, but some of the ones to note are in the city. Dan Merrill secured enough Republican write-in votes to appear on the...as a mayor candidate. In Dairy Township, Sandy Ballard and Rob Myers received enough Democratic write-in votes. And in Steelton Borough, Maria Morsenko received enough Republican write-in votes for mayor. A full listing will be posted on our website once that is completed. Before adjourning, I would...as a reminder, I will...we will meet again on June 4th for final certification. With that, any questions? For me?
I don't have questions. I just want to congratulate you and your team for the outstanding job that you did again. Mr. Fieser trained you well.
Yes, he did.
Before leaving, you did a great job during the presidential, and you're doing a great job during...
Thank you.
An off-year 24% turnout is way too low. The reasoning for the mail-ins was to get us someday to 100% turnout. We are so far from there, it's not even funny. But that just means 76% of our population didn't exercise the right to vote, which means that one out of every four is determining who's going to serve in these positions for the rest of the population. So, one of the things I often say is if you don't vote, then you have to sit there for four years, and look four years, six years, two years, whatever the terms are, and live with the decision of your fellow residents. And there's no reason why with mail-ins today, this number shouldn't be way up. I think that we as a county hopefully work with the Department of State and the two main parties and the other parties, get together and drive voter registration in the future. There's too much at stake for just this few amount of people to care for their elected officials. The work that you do and your staff is tremendous. 159 precincts throughout the county, open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, 13 hours, plus the work leading up to it that morning, that night. I know that this board is fully supportive of you. The 1,100 volunteers that give their prize time to allow us to put on this civic engagement is much appreciated too. But Chris, the work you and your team do, get those results in, mail-ins and in-person by 11:00, 11:30 at night is so noted and appreciated.
Thank you.
Chris, prior to our first certification of the votes, I'm going to ask you to grab a seat in the front row. Before that, I missed public comment on agenda items only. That is our only agenda item. Thank you for briefing us on that. We'll have more time for questions too. I just want to make sure I open it to the public. Is there anyone for public comment on agenda items only for election board? Seeing none, you can grab a seat, Chris. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure to follow that. I missed that step. Commissioner Hartwick, do you have any questions or comments?
I don't think I could say it any better than Commissioner Preece did. I don't want to be repetitive either. I just want to thank the staff, the volunteers, and the credibility that's established by a very well-oiled and capable, incredible machine that you've built. And every year, you make significant improvements. You do a recap, and it shows both in the results and the organization and coordination of staff. So, thank you to volunteers and all staff, and thank you to Commissioner Preece for your leadership as the oversight.
I also failed to mention some of the departments that assisted. Safety and security.
Yes.
IT, and the volunteers from the county as well. Much appreciated.
Absolutely.
Can you let the public know, between staff and volunteers and those serving at the polls, how many people were mobilized on an average, you know, primary voting? Is it...someone told me it was around 1,100. Is that accurate?
Yeah, oh absolutely. Yeah, so the 1,100 is the poll workers. For every precinct, we have at least three poll workers, a judge, majority inspector, minority inspector. And then depending on the size of the polling place, you might have up to 10, 11, 12 people. So that's 1,100 for just in-person voting. We have in our office canvassing the mailed ballots. Anywhere between this past election, '25, previous election, we had close to 50 people just helping open the mailed ballots. And then we have my staff, of course, who works year-round. We have, as Commissioner Preece noted, other departments who will help at various points leading up, during, and after the election. And then we have delivery teams who deliver all the equipment to all the polling places. So, yeah, that 1,100 is absolutely...that's on the low end of the...
Yeah, so we're probably closer to 1,200 mobilized for an election day. I just think it's important for the public to know that there's a lot that goes into this, a lot of planning, a lot of logistics, and we appreciate your department and all the hard work that you put into it. So we're requesting a vote today on first certification, correct?
Correct, yes.
Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Preece. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries? Anything else?
Sinuous.
Yep, sinuous, alright.
Appreciate you.
Good work, Chris.
We'll now open it for public comment in general on election, for this for election board.
Good morning, commissioners and, I guess, election board members. That's what this is. Tom Connolly, I got you. Tom Connolly, 345 North Harrisburg Street, Swatara Township. This is specifically on elections, so this is the time for this. We talk about free and fair elections. Fair would be if you did the campaign finance reporting fairly and on time. And in this election, unfortunately, we have the Dolphin County Leadership PAC that sent out multiple mailers and letters in support of a candidate, or two candidates, filed nothing. I went in to Director Spackman's office in advance of the election and described the scenario of people sending mail and sending flyers and putting up signs and not reporting it. And I gave the scenario as if it was going to be candidates that I supported, and asked if they spent over $500 in the 24-hour reporting period. What was his recommendation? His recommendation was that I report it, that my candidates report it. Unfortunately, we've seen thousands of dollars spent in this election in the 24-hour reporting period. And when we talk about the word "fair," that's unfair. If you are influencing the election or supporting a candidate and you're spending money, your name should be on a piece of paper to disclose that, so people know who is supporting who in the election. I went through the other years. I went back several cycles. And in Swatara Township, the Republicans don't follow this rule. The Democrats are online, some Republicans are. But the Republicans that seem to be supported by the Dolphin or the Dolphin County Leadership PAC and a couple other PACs that seem to be connected to Dave Feit and Mike Musser and Tom Haffey don't follow the rules. It's impress...it's very disturbing that one candidate in the previous cycle, Commissioner Varner, his wife is a department head here. It seems like whenever there's a slant towards not following the rules, it's the same people, and it's connected to the people that are involved in corruption. We should have a level, fair playing field, and the word "free" comes into this. The post office does not deliver that mail for free. And there's no shortage of the mail. And as a candidate, I know what things cost. So, this is one of the mailers. This is a previous one. Lie, cheat, and steal. Lie, cheat, and steal were the three candidates in Swatara Township. Connolly, Ellis, and Steele. Play on words. The very people that lie, cheat, and steal then send these flyers out. As you can see on here, it is paid for by the Dolphin County Leadership PAC. And I'll wrap this up. What they do is after the election, they then file the paperwork. Should everybody do that after the election, not before? Don't follow the rules. So, in the primaries, they'll file in June. And in the general election, they'll file three weeks later after they've spent in Swatara Township in the last couple cycles $100,000. $100,000. And again, if you saw today's news, it's always connected to the corruption here in Dolphin County. Same people break the rules every single time.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Anyone else for public comment?
Can we get...can we get Mr. Spackman to provide us with a summary on those allegations and whether or not violations did occur? It would be nice to know. We have an individual, an elected official coming up here making allegations. So, I think we owe it to ourselves as an election board and to find out whether or not...
But I think there's laws that govern what the reporting and the filing have to be, and it'd be great to hear that for the record clarification.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Mr. Spackman, could you, instead of going on the record right here, right now, I'm being put on the spot, provide us a memo? And that way, we can review it. Appreciate you. Anyone else for public comment? This is just public comment for the election board.
Yep.
Seeing none, all entertain a motion to adjourn. To adjourn election board and go back into commissioner. Alright, we are adjourned. We are now entering into public participation on agenda items only for the commissioners' meeting today. So, on any agenda items for today's commissioner meeting. I did not say this earlier, but just a reminder, three-minute cap, and we are being livestreamed.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Pamela Parsons, City of Harrisburg. I...my comment is on item number six. Department of Human Services Grant Award Project Application for the DA's office to support mental health law enfor...initiative for law enforcement officers. I'm not quite sure, in reading that, if we've been awarded this money, or if this is just an application.
Just an application.
Just an application.
Right.
Okay. And then, the other question that raises for me is there's a shadowy figure that works as a consultant in the DA's office, Gary Lathrop, who in his contract says he provides strategic, emotional, and spiritual support. And depending on previous contracts, there's even a little more in there. Just wondering what his involvement is in that. Thank you.
I have no knowledge of involvement in that. I think I can...if you'd like to shoot me an email, I could try to see what I can discover about that. Anyone else? Agenda items only. Alright. Move on to directors and guests. Start with Human Resources, Cassie Rosinsky.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, there are no items that need to be voted on today for salary board or personnel.
Any questions as you look over personnel transactions coming to us next week? We also, I believe, have a salary board request next week. Any questions? Hearing none?
Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Budget and Finance, Mr. Davis.
Morning, commissioners.
Good morning. I have...well, you'll see one adjustment for the packet next week, first purchase order that's there that's listed as a change order. That's going to be pushed through because that's a change in code only that was identified. It's actually for the election support that can be charged to the Act 88 grant they receive instead of the general fund dollars. So, facilitate that forward since there's no change in cost. Other than that, there's no changes that you'll see to the packet ready for approval next week.
Any questions of Mr. Davis? Hearing none? Thank you. Chief Clerk's report, Mr. Haggerty.
Good morning, commissioners. There are several items on today's agenda requiring board action. One tax stipulation relating to a tax appeal. Two, transportation infrastructure agreements with HRG for signage and bridge maintenance and inspection. A resolution and regional agreement relating to cross-county communications infrastructure. Authorization for the district attorney's office to apply for a $50,000 mental health grant. Three insurance renewals that would save the county a cumulative amount of $17,446 compared to our existing premiums. Ratification of the termination of a consulting contract. Sixty-day extension of the closing date for the tech port project. A third amended and restated agreement relating to the original parking system bond financing deal that will ensure continued compliance with obligations under the deal. A presenter agreement for parks and recreation, and the acquisition of a vehicle for our children and youth department. Lastly, an agreement with Tri-County HDC remains in former business. That concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Haggerty? Thank you, Mr. Haggerty. Solicitor's report, Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Commissioner. All matters requiring board action have been reviewed and approved for action by the board, by the solicitor's office.
Any questions of Mr. Owens? Hearing none, move on to the training packet. We have a training packet before us. There's four items. Do I have a motion for approval of the training packet? I'll make that motion. Do I have a second? Second. Motion by Commissioner Preece, second by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Matters requiring Board action. Is there any matters requiring Board action that we need to pull out for a separate vote?
Like to make a motion to approve items one through 14 on today's packet.
I would like to pull out number 11. So would it be possible for you to amend your motion?
I'll make a motion to approve items one through 10 and 12 through 14 on today's packet.
We don't need to act on 15, 16 or 17. Or have an older agenda here. I want to make sure. Got it. All right. I will second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion for items one through 10 and also items 12 through 13. Sorry, 12 through 14. Motion was made by Commissioner Priest. Motion was seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion on those items?
Yes, I'd like to specifically talk about item number 10, ratification of termination of consultant contract for Dr. Ashley Yinger. I, Commissioner Hartwick, I'm sure you're going to add a few comments here. Dr. Yinger provided exemplary leadership over the years that she served here. And in fact, I went to the final CIT graduation that she oversaw prior to the termination of her contract. And they've reached 500 people have received certification in the crisis training here in Dauphin County, whether it be teachers, police officers, other employees, human resource employees, health employees, which I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Hartwick to continue on from that. But that is something that she was involved with and want to give her a special thank you for everything she did from planning this from a seed to developing it to what it's become today.
And, and thank you, Commissioner Priest. I, I can't speak more highly of an individual that really made significant system improvement. I remember there was a long time that I heard from a director that said, there's no way police officers will be trained on CIT. There's no way that they will understand and sort of make those levels of changes. I remember ripping the Band-Aids off of our behavioral health system and taking a look at it as it related to, you know, the serious mental illness and the length of stay and how many challenges were ahead of us. And then going from sort of that exposure to a model county. And then ensuring that we had co-responders and the implementation and the funding of that strategy. Dr. Yinger actually was formerly an employee of the CMU. Then she went on to Franklin County to be the actual director of their mental health department and started a sort of a co-responder project there. She was in her education to become a doctor. And we sort of went out and recruited her back into Dauphin County to really make a significant impact. There are people that see barriers and then there are people that see work and the opportunity for change. And she certainly brought that kind of spirit, collaboration and effort to getting those efforts across the finish line. And I believe she was a professor at Penn State University and is now going to Elizabethtown University to be a professor. But her, her value and impact in this county is, is clear and will be measured in lives saved. Transition and transformative thinking and ways that we treat people that result in safer outcomes for police, those individuals that we serve and those individuals that have been trained. So I just want to thank her for her work and thank you for acknowledging that, Commissioner Priest.
I certainly want to echo both my colleagues. Dr. Yinger has always been a quality individual to speak with and to learn from, incredibly knowledgeable when it comes to criminal justice reform and definitely going to be missed not being here in the county. But I know she's got some really great work she's going to be doing as at Elizabethtown College. And who knows, maybe there'll be opportunities for partnership in the future with her work there.
She's on speed dial.
Yeah, definitely. Definitely keeping her on speed dial. All right, so we have a, we have a motion, a second. Is there any more discussion on the items before us? Items one through 10 and 12 through 14. Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. For number 11, do we have a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. I have a good amount of comments here for this item. For those who may not be familiar, today's vote for this item, item number 11, concerns an extension of the county's agreement to purchase a property meant to house all human services departments under one roof. The project has been in motion since at least 2022, well before I joined the Board of Commissioners. Based on what I found in my office after being sworn in, it appears the county has really only seriously considered two buildings, two properties for purchase and never performed a comparative analysis demonstrating the value of purchasing over leasing, at least nothing I've reviewed. Both buildings are being sold by the same real estate firm that the county hired to represent us as the buyer. In a typical transaction, the buyer and the seller each have their own advocate. In this case, however, our agent is representing both sides, meaning the same firm is acting on behalf of both the seller and the buyer, creating a clear conflict of interest. Our solicitor has noted it as a conflict. The worry is that our representative may not be fully advocating for our interests, particularly as we try to extend and complete due diligence that should have occurred months, even years ago. This is important because it raises a critical question. Did we ever get an objective assessment of the market? Or were we directed toward two buildings our broker was already contracted to sell, while better, more cost-effective options may have been ignored? We may never know for sure. But given the troubling pattern of conflicts of interest that seem to show up time and time again in Dauphin County, the answer appears all too clear, at least to me. Ultimately, the Commissioners at the time decided to move forward with 3721 Techport Drive as the preferred property of the two that were presented to them. From what I understand, that decision was made sometime in 2023. What followed was a series of due diligence steps. We, we hired multiple engineers for inspections and assessments, including an environmental study I have yet to see the results of. All of this occurred before I joined the Board of Commissioners. The county spent nearly $139,000 on these steps, but skipped a formal appraisal of the building value that would have cost around $10,000. After I was sworn in as a Commissioner, I was invited to a lunch meeting with then-chief Solicitor Fred Leidy, where I was told that this was a great project and that I should get behind it because it would be, quote, "good for my career," end quote. However, when I asked reasonable questions about the due diligence process and raised concerns about the optics of buying a property connected to a sitting Pennsylvania state senator, I was met with vague answers or dismissed outright. After the transition in our Solicitor's Office, our current Solicitor, Matt Owens, Chief Solicitor to be clear, reviewed the proposed deal originally positioned as a $12 million acquisition. He immediately believed there was room to negotiate. And truthfully, how could we ever be sure of the property's true value when no appraisal was ever conducted? Solicitor Owens moved forward, successfully negotiating a $1.6 million reduction in the sales price. I'll be honest, when that happened, it felt like a genuine win. Like for the first time, someone was truly advocating for the county's best interest in a process I had been concerned about from the very beginning. I still firmly believe that Solicitor Owens has been advocating for the county's best interests in this deal, despite being handed a deeply flawed set of circumstances. On December 18th, 2024, I voted in favor of purchasing the Techport Building for $10.4 million with a $400,000 non-refundable down payment. At the time, I understood that we would immediately begin securing hard cost estimates for the project and that total expenses would remain within the amount specifically earmarked for it in the bond. Instead, I didn't receive any quotes until May 12th, 2025, 145 days after I voted to support the project. I want to remind everyone that Commissioner Hartwick was the one leading this effort. Commissioner Priest and I did not obstruct or interfere. We were ready and waiting to review estimates and move the project forward. But due to a lack of timely information and a process marked by mismanagement and clear appearances of conflict, we missed our scheduled closing date. Now we find ourselves asking the seller for an extension, despite doing very little due diligence to secure actual pricing for the project. To be clear, we still don't have accurate cost estimates for fitting out the building. Everything remains a guess. Add in the likely HVAC replacement, parking lot resurfacing and typical construction contingencies, and our construction manager's estimate of $22 million. It quickly pushes the total project toward $35 million, nearly the entire $40 million bond we secured for infrastructure investment. That's 87.5% of our bond funding spent on a single property when we already own over 100 buildings with urgent needs for repair. Our maintenance team does great work, but they're under-resourced. Taking on another massive facility will only stretch them thinner and create long-term financial strain. It's not a responsible or sustainable investment, especially when we don't even know what we're investing in, what the price tag is. When budget concerns were raised, Commissioner Hartwick stated, we would be getting another bond, a surprise to both me and Commissioner Priest, as that had never been discussed with us. It was presented as if it had always been part of the plan. The reality is, we're being asked to hand over a blank check for this project funded by taxpayer dollars. From the start, this has had all the warning signs of a money pit. I wanted to believe in this project, but with what I know now, I regret ever supporting it. Given the current market, I'm confident we can walk away from this deal and recover far more than $400,000 and find a far better option. There are two buildings. This is just my cursory search of the internet. Two newer buildings that offer over 100,000 square feet each at roughly half the cost of Techport. To be clear, the price per square footage of these buildings is around $34. The price per square foot of what we're buying to acquire the Techport Building is $71 per square foot. Newer buildings at literally more than half the cost. Let's take the cost savings even further. I don't think we should necessarily be buying a building at all. There's plenty of prime office space available for lease right here in downtown Harrisburg. We talk consistently about how the absence of state workers has hurt the downtown Harrisburg businesses. So let's be part of the solution. Bringing nearly 300-plus county employees downtown would boost the local economy while also allowing us to lease high-quality office space at historically low rates. It would still give our staff a unified professional workspace, but with far less financial risk and without the conflicts tied to this current deal. And when something breaks, like an elevator, a water heater, an HVAC system, it's not us on the hook, it's the property owner. Here's the final straw for me. Commissioner Hartwick has led this from day one. And based on everything I've seen, I don't believe his motives have been transparent. He has repeatedly kept Commissioner Priest and me out of the loop. And on April 4th, just two days after a concerning incident involving Commissioner Hartwick's conduct at a public meeting, our office received an inquiry about 3815 Techport Drive, the property next to the one we're currently under contract for. We were told Commissioner Hartwick expressed interest in purchasing it for the county. And the seller asked if another Commissioner could pick up where he and the realtor left off to tour the building. Let that sink in. We still don't have firm cost estimates for the current building acquisition. And yet Commissioner Hartwick was already looking at buying another building. With what funds? Another bond, I suppose? This was news to both Commissioner Priest and me. And yes, like the other Techport property, this building is connected to a Pennsylvania state senator as well, just a different one. Given everything I've witnessed since taking office, I want to share my full, unfiltered reaction to the email that informed me that Commissioner Hartwick was quietly exploring another purchase without notifying his colleagues or staff. This is my legitimate response to the email in full. Quote, shocking, dot, 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 said, no one, comma, ever. Business as usual. End quote. That's what this has become. Business as usual in Dauphin County. Shadow deals, hidden agendas and taxpayers left holding the bill. Whether it's a Commissioner on a vendor's payroll or a consultant getting rich while playing every side to the deal, the pattern's clear. And while this behavior continues, I'll keep showing up to connect the dots because someone has to. I voted for this project in good faith because I believe in the vision, consolidating human services into one location, creating better workspaces for our staff and supporting the tireless work Randy and her team do every day. That vision is nope, and I will continue to champion it. Yet the execution has left me scratching my head, wondering if it is negligence or self-interest getting in the way. Either way, I can no longer support this project moving forward. But I want to be clear about what I do support. Here's what I support. Let this deal lapse and absorb the $400,000 loss, knowing it will save us money in the long run. Engage a new real estate agent who will show us the full market, not just their listings. Seriously consider leasing space over buying. Hire an independent owners rep or project manager now. So once we find the right space, we have a qualified professional leading the process from day one and advocating for the county's best interest the whole time. It's time we do this right and for the right reasons. I have more, but I'll let my colleagues respond.
Well, I'll start. There was a lot of information in there and I appreciate your comments. And I want to start off by thanking Randy Jaeger and her team for the work that they've done for the past several years locating, which you have told me that the Techport location is the desirable location right by Dauphin County Prison and work release. In terms of this item in front of us here, extension of the closing date for 3721 Techport Drive by 60 days, I'd like to ask our solicitor to comment on, on what that means and what, are there any ties to that, once that 60 days elapses?
What this, what this is, is a cost-free extension of 60 days. You will not pay the seller any money for this extension, which is somewhat unusual. If you do not close by the end of July, the deal is done. The liquidated damages under the original contract is the $400,000 good faith deposit.
Okay, so we have secured a 60-day extension with the seller. I, as one Commissioner, will do everything to exhaust every avenue to make this project work and not forfeit the $400,000 that's out there right now. With that being said, a lot of new information was presented today that I would like to gather more information on. I'm not saying that this project is going to come to fruition, but I believe that we owe it to ourselves not to forfeit the $400,000 if we are able to make this project work at that location. That's what we agreed to. That's what we voted on. And if in fact it doesn't work, we don't have to pay any more fees related to it. And as Commissioner Douglas just pointed out, there are other locations that could even be cheaper at. So I'm open to that as well. But in the meantime, we made a commitment to purchase this building. Matt, thank you for the 1.6 million plus savings that you garnered there. And Randy, thank you and your team. And I think we have to take advantage of this one-time opportunity and this 60-day free extension to make that initial location come to fruition.
And I agree with Commissioner Priest. As it relates to the specific allegations, I think they're quite frankly outlandish. And some of them I've just heard for the first time. And I'm not going to warrant a response based upon being presented with things that aren't substantiated related facts. So I'm certainly going to move this.
Is it free? Let's get into that. We have to secure vendors because from December to now, we have done no work in due diligence to understand what it's going to cost per square foot. So in 60 days now, we're going to find out what it costs per square foot. What we couldn't do from December 18th to today, in all of that time, which was, I think, 150-some days, what we couldn't do, we now are going to do in 60 days. I just want to ask our solicitor, is that accurate? That's the plan?
Yes.
And who's going to do that work for us? Because we clearly are not competent to do that work.
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
There's three professional service providers that are doing the work.
Are any of them currently under contract?
No, I don't know that there will be a contract.
So we will need to agree on contracts next week. I would assume next week. So we're already six, we're already seven days behind, correct? When we agree on this today? Of the 60-day extension.
Please restate your, I'm not sure I understand your question.
I'm trying. I'm trying to ask, we have no one under contract currently that's going to be giving us the priced-out per-square-footage cost of what it's going to cost to fit out this building. No one is under contract yet, correct?
Correct.
Assuming we work at lightning-fast speed, they'll be on the agenda next week. Do we know the cost of each of those contracts?
Zero.
Zero. So we're going to get free work for sixty days, and that's been agreed upon by all three vendors?
Correct.
And why would they do that?
I don't know.
Out of the kindness of their heart, or because we're going to be obligated to go with them moving forward afterwards? We're not going to be able to do an RFP?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
There's no obligation to those vendors. There's no contractual obligation.
So we won't? What will the contract entail then? You're doing free work for us? I'm just saying, we're putting the cart before the horse here because we're extending it sixty days, but I don't have any contracts to review for the vendors. And I'm being told, in a fantasy world, that we're going to get free vendor work with no obligation. I just, I don't see how... That's literally not how the world works. I mean, if it is, and Matt, as I've said, this isn't about you. You've saved us one-point-six-million dollars on this deal. You're clearly saving us more if you're getting us a bunch of free vendors for the next sixty days. But let's move on. The vendors is a joke, but I guess I'll be here next week talking about that. Let's talk about the staff time. Do you anticipate we'll be talking about this every week in executive session?
Yes.
Maybe even multiple executive sessions?
Possibly.
Great. Perfect. So from December to now, I can think of five executive sessions, maybe six, where this has been a substantive conversation. It will be a substantive conversation every week until the sixty days is over, probably with specialty executive sessions. So we will probably have more executive sessions in the next sixty days on this than we had from December to now. Perfect. So that's a cost. I just want to make it clear. A free sixty-day extension is not a free sixty-day extension. It's going to have a cost. But let's get into something else here. This contract that we're about to sign is not just item number four in the First Amendment of this contract is the extension. There is more in here. Due diligence. Item number two. Here's how it reads. Due diligence. Buyer acknowledges that all due diligence activities have been completed and waived. Does building out a cost estimate count as due diligence?
It can.
Financial feasibility is due diligence?
It can.
Budget validation is due diligence?
Certain.
Would you say neglecting those steps could actually put the buyer at risk?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Would you say neglecting those steps could put the buyer at risk?
The steps you just mentioned?
Yes. Sorry, financial feasibility and budget validation.
Sure.
Which have not taken place yet, have they? In full?
Not in full, correct.
Okay. Also, is an appraisal due diligence?
Can be.
Can be?
It can be.
You wouldn't say it is, you say it can be?
Sure.
Okay. Providing us an independent opinion of the market, ensuring that the buyer is not overpaying. Sounds a lot like due diligence to me. So we're about to sign an agreement, my colleagues are about to support an agreement that says buyer acknowledges that all due diligence activities have been completed and waived. But all due diligence has not been completed, and I certainly don't want to waive the county's right to due diligence because that's the reason we're extending the deal. Is it not?
So, as I think I explained before, the paragraph you're referencing is the due diligence referenced under the original sales agreement. It is put in there by the seller so that the county can't come back and say, "We did not complete our due diligence. We're pulling out of the deal, and we want our deposit back." That's why that paragraph's there. It's not the due diligence that you could classify as the activities that are taking place now. If that makes sense.
But that doesn't say it in this amendment. Why does it need to be in the amendment? Because they think they're going to lose four-hundred-thousand dollars? It seems pretty ironclad that that four-hundred-thousand dollars is hard based on the contract.
Yes.
So why would you need this to secure it? Because what I see it as is when in sixty days, we are all back at the same exact days, making the same exact argument. That if we do choose to walk away, they're going to say, "You're walking away because of due diligence that you acknowledged that you completed and waived." You can't do that. You acknowledged it here, that you completed the due diligence already before you signed this agreement. And you waived the due diligence. And based on just a basic legal understanding of due diligence, cost estimates, budget validations, appraisals, all fall under due diligence based on common sense, but also legal. I guess I don't understand why it's necessary to be in here.
That question would be better posed to the seller. But my explanation is that it's in there to protect them from the county coming back and saying, "We did not complete our due diligence. We're not buying the building. We're not closing for this extension, and we want our four-hundred-thousand dollars back." But if you look under paragraph four, you will see, because I think your concern might be a specific performance request or demand or lawsuit potentially, that we would have to buy Techport.
That's exactly what I'm concerned about.
So that's addressed in paragraph four, where the liquidated damages are spelled out. There is no other remedy.
I understand what paragraph four says, and I do understand that paragraph four is your attempt at emphasizing that we are not obligated to buy the building. But if our refusal to buy the building is because of due diligence, that we find out that the budget is beyond what we can absorb, we are then put in a position where the reason we're walking away from the purchase, the acquisition, is because of due diligence. But we just said we waived due diligence, and due diligence has been completed. My colleagues clearly are okay with that. I am not. The other thing I want to ask, what's up with the transfer tax? Can you explain that to me, point number three? Like, what is that? Explain transfer tax. My understanding is it's two percent of the sale. It's split between the buyer and the seller, and somehow it got into this as well.
So you're correct. Every real estate transaction has a transfer tax. When a property sells, one percent is typically borne by each party. The county would be exempt, would not have to pay transfer tax, but the county can still opt out of that. In negotiating the one-point-six-million-dollar reduction, we agreed to pay our transfer tax, which we are able to do. So we're going to pay the one percent. So you spent essentially a hundred-and-four-thousand dollars in tax to save one-point-six-million dollars.
So that was part of the previous agreement?
Correct.
Then why is it in here?
Again, it's probably a question better posed to the seller.
It just seems odd that we would be adding things to an amendment that already exists within a contract, unless we're trying to gain leverage.
It's a fair comment, but you know, my explanation is the same as to your other issue, that the seller is just being careful.
Anyone else for public comment on this, or Commissioner comment on this? Hearing none, we have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Nay.
Move on to former business?
Yes, I would like to just make a motion to place on the floor the Human Services Agreement with Tri-County HDC LTD for consideration.
I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
No.
All those in favor?
All those in favor of... Again, the motion is to vote this... We are talking about former business, former business, correct?
Yeah.
So this is to place this on the floor, and today we are going to not consider this and vote it down. So I want to make sure that that's very clear and reflected in the record.
I'm sorry, I thought you were motioning for...
You have to motion to get it back on the floor. So you have to make a formal motion for consideration on the floor, which I just did, and then you would ask for the vote.
Okay, so we're going to vote... This is just a vote in the affirmative to put it back on the floor, and then we will vote?
That's correct. You voted affirmatively to put it back on the floor.
Commissioner Hartwick motioned. I seconded. And we're voting to put it back on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is on the floor.
I'll make a motion that we deny the Human Service Agreement proposal that is in front of us.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. This is a motion to deny.
Correct.
Those in favor of this are denying...
So we would say yea to a deny, correct?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hold on, discussion.
I just want to state for the record, I've spoken to Randy Jaeger, Director of Human Services, who has advised me there are two other projects out there that she is aware of and working on that would be a good fit for these dollars.
They'll be in front of the board for consideration to ensure that these dollars are not, federal dollars are not lost. Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Commissioner Hartwick.
Okay, over the past year, it's become increasingly clear that there has been repeated leaks from one of our commissioners to Penn Live, undermining our ability to govern effectively. Just this past week, confidential employee information was leaked once again to Penn Live by that same commissioner. This breach serves no purpose other than to advance a personal political agenda. This particular leak is not only deeply unethical, it's also illegal, and it puts the confidentiality and dignity of our employees at risk. Using employees as a political pawns represents a disturbing new low, and I will not stand by to allow it to continue. We cannot claim to value our employees and violate their legal protections under the law in the same breath. This board will stand up to protect the rights of our employees. They are, in fact, our most valuable assets. Accordingly, I have directed our solicitors to refer this matter to the district attorney and to the attorney general and to the State Ethics Commission. I've submitted a legal summary that outlines where and how the law appears to have been violated. We must return our focus to governing. We do not work for Penn Live. We work for the taxpayers of Dauphin County, and it's time that we get back to doing just that. Thank you.
Commissioner Priest?
No comment.
My only public comment today will be, wow, transparency really makes some people uncomfortable, doesn't it? Public comment, anyone? Go ahead. Yep, public comment, three minutes. Come on up, yeah. On anything. Okay. I have Antonio Foster and Gene Stope on deck. That's fine. As long as you position the microphone away, that would be helpful. Want to make sure everybody online can hear you.
My name's Antonio Foster, also address right, State five-nine-four, Chambers Street. I've lived in Harrisburg all of my life. I'm here to speak today about things that have been going on, some complete injustice. People might not like what I have to say today, but I feel like the truth has to be said. I want to say about, I don't know the exact dates, but the dates can be traced by by the events, if you understand what I mean by that. My name's Antonio Foster. Once again, my brother's Aneas Foster. Upon him coming home, his wife is Leanne Foster. I was asked to join... I was asked to sell drugs for the Harrisburg Police, I would say. That's what I was asked to join. So my brother, Aneas, and his wife Leedy have a relationship with the Commissioner of Police. That's why the power that they got, I didn't even want to speak on these things, but my life has been in shambles since this has been going on, since I said no. And I wanted to join this. As things progressed, things got worse because being as though I knew what was going on, I knew who was responsible for certain things. For example, those fat nobodies. The reason why y'all can't solve them is because the crimes we're probably going to trace back when it comes down to it, to the police. It's their informants, not the police. I don't want to say the police. It's their informants that's doing it, and they protecting them. And since then, I've been being gang stalked. That's what's been going on in my life. I brought this down to CID, Corey Dickerson. I gave him information, gave him a cell phone with information numbers, everything in it. Because I was supposed to be the fallen victim for those fat nobodies. So I came to blew the whistle when that happened. And that's never been brought to the public. Instead, Corey decided to try to offer me another deal to bring me back into what I would call as a gang. I mean, it's the most diabolical gang that I've ever seen, so I would just call it a gang. I was offered at that time to set up Daryl Holling. I didn't want no parts of none of the above. I just wanted to clear my name of the fat nobodies because that's what was going on. I have proof. I have people. I have witnesses. They instill fear in people to the point where people can't speak up. I don't know how Harrisburg, the money that they use, they even pay these people off. Like payments is being paid out. And all people involved, they have no problem with giving it up because since then, my life has been in shambles. Like I said, I was being gang stalked on numerous levels. When I go places, I deal up with, I end up with issues.
I'm sorry, sir, that's three minutes, but if we could get some additional information from you, I can share our contact info.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Mr. Stope?
Gene Stope, Fishing Creek Valley. Commissioners, sorry I missed last week. I had a commitment to hike across the Grand Canyon out there, out west.
You made it.
Went from the north rim to the south rim, the north rim, twenty-one miles, and it was a hundred and four degrees. My point is this, okay? Not bad for a nice birthday gift, but my point is this, is that obviously it's a national treasure, the Grand Canyon, all right? International treasure. I think we have to start looking at Dauphin County as a long-term international treasure, all right? This is an amazing county, an amazing river, and what does that tell me? That tells me this is that the, well, the Grand Canyon out there used to do uranium mining at the Grand Canyon. You can see the ruins out there in western Grand Canyon. Why they stopped it? Because it's dangerous and also because of blutes. So right here in Dauphin County, we have seven-hundred tons of the most high-level nuclear waste possible. And into the future, way into the future, there's no way of getting rid of that or moving that out. And right now, you have to value Dauphin County more by realizing that we're about to, with this company, Constellation, add three-hundred-fifty more metric tons of high-level nuclear waste to Dauphin County. Forget about the company, Constellation. Think about the community here, Dauphin County, as a natural wonder, okay? Pennsylvania's a natural wonder. Why add another three-hundred-fifty-thousand, three-hundred-fifty tons of high-level nuclear waste to this county forever? That's a question. It's forever. Sure, jobs and things like that, fine. We have Constellation Energy selling the energy to Microsoft, the energy not benefiting people here, et cetera. My point is that why should we be the slaves of Constellation Energy and the waste that they are creating and the damage that it is doing to the long-term beauty of Dauphin County and the, without any kind of federal move or federal ability in the foreseeable future, and I'm talking a hundred years, to take care of that waste. Nothing is in place. Nothing is happening. We're just making more waste and destroying the future of Dauphin County. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Gene.
And I did okay. Hundred and four degrees, one day across.
Good work. Next up, we have Mr. Connolly, and then we'll open it to the floor for public comment. Next up, we have Mr. Connolly, and then we'll open it to the floor for public comment.
Thank you, I'll be, I'll be brief. Tom Connolly, 345 North Harrisburg Street, Swatara Township. And when I, when I signed that, it was for the election work. And I was, uh, something I heard here. All for the investigations. Multiple subjects, multiple people. Uh, I think it's already going in the right direction. I think Penn Live's doing a great job not for leaking personal information. I'm not sure what, uh, Commissioner Hartwick was talking about. Being a victim of that from this building, you have to be really strong. Some people are weak. But, but most of the information that comes out in campaigns in Swatara Township is some type of personal attack on me. And that's fine. But when somebody comes into the election office and uses a camera to take a picture of a screen to attack military veteran, Commissioner Bowder, at 91 years old, and release his personal information, and then mail it out, that needs to be investigated. And the same district attorney that was just mentioned to investigate has shown that he's pretty much incapable. So, I have a suggestion here. Maybe we skip the Dauphin County District Attorney. And then we bypass the Attorney General's office. Because all the things that have been coming out lately, they had years, years to discover and pursue. So, to help Commissioner Hartwick and the 296,000 citizens in Dauphin County, I think we just jump right to the Department of Justice Public Corruption Unit, who has been working in this area anyway. And we can just add items that need to be investigated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Anyone for public comment?
Pamela Parsons, City of Harrisburg. I didn't sign up because I didn't think I was going to have anything to say beyond my comment on that piece of legislation. But I'm sitting here feeling really sad because I, you started, Commissioner Douglas, in talking about Memorial Day. And I'm thinking about my uncle who fought in the Battle of the Bulge. And an uncle who fought in Korea. And my neighbor, when I was a teenager, who was killed in Vietnam. And my dad, who was an atomic veteran and died in his 50s. And all my friends from high school with children who were in the military and died by suicide. And even some of my younger friends have died by suicide or have left the country and become expatriates. And I grew up in a world where that was important. And now I sit here and I listen and I read all, and I've done my own research. And the kind of sliminess that has come out of this county, at the money pits, the solar farm, now the tech, um, now the tech port, sounds like it. When we, we talk about former Commissioner Hayes, when we talk about Mr. Musser, when we talk about Prime Care, we talk about former legislators who have their fingers in this. When we talk about our corner tangentially, all of this smells bad. All of this is ugly. All of this is slimy. Is this what all these people who were important in my life died for? Is this what taxpayers are supposed to be putting money into? This just makes me really sad today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parsons. Anybody else? Hearing none, I entertain motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Adjourn.